Come up with something that will work here in the city of Stonecrest that would include less of an impact on our budget and also less of an impact on our city staff and personnel who are, you know, up against deadlines with, you know, critical issues like these IGA's and zoning issues and the like. Which, of course, you, our, we can introduce our youth too. So, my, at the end of the day, I'm not saying no to a project of this type. I'm saying yes to, let's find a robust way of getting more students included and trying to figure out a way to do it with less of an impact on our budget so it would be easier to digest and to...
I think that's a good point, and I see this as being just as critical as the IGA's. And if we add, if we add, which I'm not opposed to, more students, and we're talking about not allocating or appropriating any monies, but yet we're talking about having more students engaged in the process. As I said, this was on its way as a private venture, and it was brought to my attention that it would, it would be best to follow the models of the city. So to be collaborative and to be, you know, all-inclusive, I thought it would be best to roll this out to the council. The private sponsors are ready to work with this, but I thought it would be best to have the council first have the opportunity to see if the council wants to move it forward. Now, there will be some costs involved in, in running the program. So we, I don't know how we could be effective with a youth council without any type of budget. I mean, even a couple hundred dollars. But if we're not willing, if this council doesn't see, you know, a couple thousand dollars being valuable towards improving, you know, the leadership and the civic engagement of our youth, then I don't know what, you know, I don't know what we will do. I'm not opposed to, I this, I think the council have had this information for more than a week, and no one has emailed or asked me any question about it. I might have, could have had more questions. I wasn't aware, I mean, Councilwoman Campbell loves it. Councilman Rock Turner said, "Count me in." And I thought Councilman George Turner was in. So I didn't realize that there was any real pushback with anything to do with this particular ordinance. If I had have known, I would have came more prepared to answer your question.
Councilwoman Adon, I don't, I don't believe. From where I sit, that anybody is, is in objection to the ideal of working with youth in the city of Stonecrest. I don't think that's the issue at all. I think what the issue here is, is how we move forward, how we move from a great start to a great finish. So, you know, as far as, you know, there's a lot of things to be considered. And I think that, that ideal, I think that, and I, I can't put words in the mouth for other council members, but I think that every council member is, is sold on the ideal of having some relationship with the youth and the young folks in the city of Stonecrest. That is, to me, is not the issue. The issue is the how, and I do think that we need to spend a little more collaborative time together to talk this out, you know, to work out the details. For instance, what you just mentioned in regards to the possibility of private input, particularly as far as funding goes. So if that is still, if that is on the table at all, it was still considered. I would think it would still be on the table even if you collaborated with the city. So if there is private funding available that would still work with the collaboration of the city, that would make our job a lot easier in determining the direction of this.
Well, as I said, the council have had this information for a week. And if I had have known that we had additional questions on it, I would have been more prepared to answer it. But to go back to your other question about private sponsors, Councilman Clinton. This, this was put together initially as a private venture, and it was being driven with lots of interests. We put a halt on it to first have the council determine if this is something that they want to do. And I think Ms. Cosbury have put a lot of time and hours into putting together an ordinance. Again, I got no feedback from anyone until today. But, you know, I don't have anything new to share. You have the complete pocket from the city of Stockbridge. You have the ordinance that Ms. Cosbury have put together. And the mayor have said he likes it, but he's not willing to fund it. So it's up to you all what you want to do. But I do have people who are very active about wanting to do something with the youth in Stonecrest. And maybe we can start it as a private venture and later bring the city in. You guys?
Councilwoman.
Madam Council.
That's right. I'm sorry.
Councilwoman, you're absolutely right. I do support it. I think it's a wonderful idea of anything that enhances the quality of life for our youth. I guess my question is, is in any way we can do this at a lower rate of, in a sense of cost? You said ten thousand dollars is the minimum?
No, no. I said what I provided you was a sample budget of what the city of Stockbridge use, what they have. That's their budget. So I sent that budget so that you could see the mine items and you could see the total dollar amount. But there's been no discussion about alternative appropriations either until now. So I don't know. So what my answer to you would be, we can negotiate this and make it be what we want it to be. If, if you don't like what's presented, then what is your counteroffer to do something with the youth? If you, the mayor have said that he's not interested in funding it. And I don't know if that's the opinion of the rest of the council. If it is, then we're just working with something that's not going to be funded properly.
Yeah. Just to be clear, I do think this is a great idea. I spend a lot of time volunteering with young people, and we do need to get them involved in what's happening on the municipal level. We have to recognize that we're still trying to stand the city up. A lot of things got to be put in place. We've got to grow a budget so if we can fund some of these things and have personnel to manage it. I'm just saying, I think this is a little bit premature, maybe by a couple of years. Otherwise, I would be ready to jump and run, but I mean, run with the program that is. Right now, I'm trying to jump and run the other way. Because I don't think we are quite ready to handle it, and I would hate to venture into it and drop the ball. So I'm not ready to advance on it yet, by a couple of years.
Any further comments regarding this initiative? All right. Seeing none. We'll move to the discussion of the Stonecrest Citizens Splot Oversight Committee. That belongs to me. The purpose of the, the Citizens Splot Oversight Committee is, is just the way it sounds. I'll be a little bit more formal with it so that people will know. Other municipalities and entities such as Rockdale County, you can find, just like every place, has a, a Splot Oversight Committee. This divides up their citizens. What makes us unique and part of this is that once we send out the information with regards to the interest of the citizens, I don't know about the rest of the council persons. I think, out of our experience, it is, it exploded. And it exploded with some really solid talent and really solid citizens that have experience in this area. And there's nothing would be better than to have citizens that have a stakeover of their tax dollars that has the experience and talent in this given area. So the mission of the Splot Citizens Group shall be to provide transparency and accountability to the citizens of Stonecrest regarding the expenditures from the 2018 Splot. So the purpose of the Splot Citizens Group shall be to, one, ensure that revenue collected out of the Splot is spent in accordance with the CAB Splot law, that it funds the Splot that are well-managed and used efficiently, and that the projects funded by the CAB portion, which belongs to us, Splot, is equitable, appropriately prioritized, and well-distributed throughout the unincorporated or the incorporated area of the city of Stonecrest. So, simply put, we're developing this committee. And Mr. City Attorney, we can add to some of this later. A membership of twelve. We started with nine, then went ten, and then out of the high interest of our citizens, I moved that, I moved that number, I moved that number to twelve. Also, the City Attorney, we can, we can, we can talk about this later, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. I, I didn't want to stagger that with regards to the time they all started stomping at, at the same time. So, woman, show the council. In fact, I've heard from both of you all, candidates and some really good citizen candidates that you guys have provided for. In fact, I've actually heard from everyone. All, all council with regards to candidates and members with regards to these Citizens Splot Committee. So in short, we'll collectively go through this particular, these particular people, decide on them, and, you know, make them, make the committee official. Yes, sir.
I'm looking at two committees here. Is, is that correct?
Looks like one's just actually language from the CAB County.
So the, there's a Stonecrest Advisory Committee, and then there's a Stonecrest Citizen Oversight Group.
The Advisory Committee, I believe, was the one that was related to the youth council in the top, the ordinance?
Now, it says Splot Citizen Oversight Group, and this one says a resolution authorizing the establishment of Splot Citizen Oversight Advisory Committee.
Okay, so there's a resolution here. I think it's the CAB County.
Okay.
Yeah, just as an example.
This is a sample, an example.
Right. And then this one here, and then you'll, you'll see the one that actually says Stonecrest.
Oh.
There's a resolution authorizing the establishment of Splot Citizen Oversight Advisory Committee.
Okay.
All right. So example, actual.
And with this, but despite having any judicial powers?
What, when you say judicial powers?
I mean, in terms of being able to rule on matters that would be binding?
They, this, this committee is just like the real committee that we have. Recommended, recommendations.
And this is the standard type of committee that the CAB and many of the other cities have put in place to oversee the expenditures for lots of funds?
That's correct.
And I did get, and you did clear some of it. So eight members, twelve members, and more, so?
It'll be twelve.
And it will be twelve.
Yes, sir.
And that's coming from each district?
So each, each, each district council person has sent names with regards to who they'd like to see on the committee. So, names and telephone numbers.
There were twelve, is that, would be two per district?
Not necessarily. Because I, we're going to reserve a couple for, as, as per our charter of business. Because we have business owners that can be on the committees also. We have some business owners in the city of Stonecrest that fit that particular criteria.
So we nominated as many as we want?
Nominate as many as you want.
Yes.
And then we'll, then we'll narrow it down from there. But the important part that I've asked people to do is to have, you know, contact person, you know, contact phone number.
Right.
Those, I don't know, fifty-three thousand people, and you just can't send me their name, and they go, hey, here's this person. Which has happened already. That to the two people that are sitting up here. All right. All right, we're clear?
I agree so for now. But I know, so, I'll look up.
Oh, for sure. Oh, good. Councilman, you good? All right. Okay. Mr. City Attorney, we, and Mr. City Attorney will, will find two of the documents and make sure it goes, you know, goes right out. All right. Number three, discussion on Rice Consulting.
Yeah, I understand that the, was this an internal conversation or was this going to be a conversation with, with Rice to provide a presentation? What would you like to do?
I'm at the city's pleasure.
Okay, then. Why don't you come up and?
At least we both are at the city's pleasure. Have a presentation like this. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, could I ask, how did this item come to be added to the agenda today, today?
I can respond to that.
Please.
Conversations that we've had in the past as far as the progression of what would be taking place was that we've contemplated this title of, of...
Well, I, and my, my question more pointedly is, who added this to the agenda?
Who added it?
Yes. I mean, it didn't just appear, did it? Okay, all right. That's what, I just want to know who added it, that's all.
Let me say good afternoon to Mayor and Council. Mayor is going to be queuing up the presentation here shortly. I have provided. Again, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just for the record, I'm John J. Quinney, the President and Chief Executive Officer of Rice Consulting. Thank you for inviting me here today to offer input on this Splot-related item. I'm here today to provide you with factual information about the professional services my firm offers, thank you, to the offer to the city of Stonecrest. To back up quickly to give context, on August 11, 2017, Rice received an email from Mayor Jason Larrity. This email request was sent to two consultant firms, Rice and CH Stonehill Jacobs, a company that employs the city manager and the assistant city manager, and CC, the full council, and Tom Curry, the city attorney. In the email, Mayor Jason Larrity formally requested our firms, Rice and CH Stonehill, to submit qualifications and pricing to provide these services to the city of Stonecrest. In response to the mayor's request, Rice submitted qualifications and pricing on August 16, 2017. Then the mayor and the city council studied the two competing proposals, and in August 21, 2017, at a city council meeting at approximately 10:30 a.m., based on a recorded meeting, Rice Consulting was unanimously selected to provide these services to the city of Stonecrest. I will share with you today why Rice Consulting Group is the best proposal for the city based upon council selection. I will also share with you today, the recent Rice Consulting Group is ready, fully, to hit the ground running with little to no learning curves. We're ready to get shovel-ready projects queued up and out of the door so the citizens of Stonecrest, the taxpayers, can see that it's lost dollars at work. Just a bit about Rice Consulting Group. I founded the firm in 1995. Over twenty-three years ago, we reformulated ourselves in 2010 in order to handle our international clients. We have a corporate office here in Atlanta, Georgia, but I would add that the firm started in the CAB County as assistant of the CAB County. We have a regional office in Columbia, South Carolina, and an office in Washington, D.C. Staff of twelve principals and thirty-four deployments assigned to project teams. We're an international leading firm, offering professional services and program management services, city urban planning, transportation and transit planning, traffic and transportation engineering, water and sewer infrastructure projects. Seventy-five percent of our clients are repeat business. From a qualification perspective, the firm has developed the city of Atlanta Comprehensive Transportation Plan, better known as Connect Atlanta. This plan involves many of the aspects of the skill set that is needed for the city of Stonecrest Transportation Plan. That plan actually came up with over $1.6 billion worth of improvements. With that, the city actually took a bond out and actually bonded seven hundred million, over seven hundred million dollars to start the implementation of projects that came out of the plan that we developed. We completed the earlier version of the CAB County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, yet again utilizing the same skill sets that will be required for the actual project here in Stonecrest. Some very specific to CAB County project experience. The Clonkai Runk about planning, analysis, and design. Rita and Road Corridor Study, Covenant Highway Intersection Improvement, Martin-Kings of Town Station Transit Oriented Development Plan, Memorial Drive Corridor Improvement, the CAB Mass Act Living Plan on the Covenant Highway areas. Also, we had two other CAB Mass Act Living Plan on the Nola Road Study area, as well as Black Hills Parkway. We're currently working on two major initiatives for the CAB County. That one being Moreland Avenue Transportation Scoping Project, as well as the Lawrenceville Highway Transportation Scoping Project. We worked with completing the Calmida Transportation Plan Update, not the original plan, but the update, but it's still with all the elements that's required here for a plan. We did the Spalding County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We did the City of Valdosta Transportation Plan with City Manager Larry Hinson there. I'm sure you know Mayor, City Manager Hinson very well. Atlanta Belt Line, we worked on the Atlanta Belt Line project. This is a park bike head trail project with redevelopment throughout the city of Atlanta. We've worked on this project since 1998 under the then-mayor, Mayor Shirley Franklin. First, it started with a feasibility study. Is it feasible to have a belt line? That went on from 98 until 2000. From 2000 until 2004, we did the complete redevelopment plan to show the developer what are the potentials are as relates to the belt line. And then from 2004 until present, we did the original sub-area master plan for six of the ten subareas. And now we're going through an update because time has passed. So they want to update the plan. The development had happened, the belt line is partially built. Transit isn't there yet, but it's coming. So we've, we've been tied to this project, and I call it sort of our signature project. I don't tell all of our clients that because every client would be a signature client. But this is one of our signature projects because it's the longest run in history project of the firm. It's an international award-winning project. This project has won over thirty awards since 2010. The 2015 Phoenix Award, and I want to name them all, the 2014 ACUC Engineering Excellence Award, and many more. We also worked on the planning initiative for Marty. We're on a team where we actually did a lot of the planning and studies for the I-20 extension from Stonecrest, Turnerville Road, all the way to downtown Atlanta. We looked and evaluated twelve station locations for touchdown points for this future transit alignment going into downtown Atlanta, providing services to the Stonecrest area. Program Management Services. We're currently on the team for the Georgia Major Mobility Investment Program, major initiative, it's a statewide program management project. It includes a host of services that you see this and there. And the actual, this one, but the project is, it's really a project over ten, of, of twenty-two years. It should be done by 2026. So they are planning to design a phase of it to be done by 2026. But we're involved with the planning, oversight, project management. We're working with contractors overseeing the construction. One of the major ones that's going on now is a project we just recently designed. It's ID5 North of Downtown Atlanta. That's being widened. They want to add express lanes there. So we're involved with the planning, the engineering side, and the construction management side also with projects that we're managing too. Richmond County, we're working on the Transportation Penny Program, very similar to Stonecrest Splot. Very similar, just started two years ago, early. But we're heavily involved with management project, not just planning and engineering, but also construction oversight to make sure the projects are being built as was planned and designed. That, that is a twenty-two-year transportation improvement project. They are actually spending just over $600 million for roadway improvement, over $300 million for transit improvement, and over $80 million for bike, pedestrian, and greenway improvement. City of Columbia, the Clean Water Program, another major initiative that we are working on. This is a ten-year contract. We're actually providing program management services for the improvement of their water infrastructure throughout the entire city of Columbia, the sewer project, actually. But this is to make sure that they have good separation at the pump stations, make sure that they can handle the water as it flows in from floods, and make sure it's not contaminating the water getting into the neighborhood. So this program started about four years ago, and we have another six years to go because it's a part of the planning, engineering, design, and construction oversight. City of Virginia Beach, this one is unique. We tend to lump a lot of projects in transportation project. With this project, there was actually a facility built in the transportation money, so we call it a transportation project. But I say that to say that we bring the skill set to provide to the city of Stonecrest facility management as well. We're not architects, but what we do, just like we did for the city of Virginia Beach, we bring a team together, and we bring the architect in and help them with the process. But this is a part of the engineering community. We always team to make sure that we have the skill set on board to be able to execute the services as is spelled out in the scope we design. I want to touch on that one. That one dealt with the emergency evacuation in Washington, D.C. But just to look at nationally where we've worked, this is give you a high level of overview of some of the projects we've worked on nationally. International experience, this gives you some experience that the firm have worked on internationally. And I'm going to pick on Cape Town very, for a quick second because Cape Town brought us in to look at preparing for the World Cup when it was there, the Super World Cup, when it was there. So we had to identify new transportation roadway, have a paved roadway paved. We had to look at parking lot design, the drainage, the water design for the parking lot. Basically, there were temporary parking lots that were established to handle the influx of people that were coming to the city that didn't have no place to put them, but to be able to manage that crowd. So we call it specially been planning, specially been engineering and designed. And then we also had engineering inspectors there overseeing what was being built. The next one I'm going to pick on is in Jamaica for the Ministry of Transport. They brought us in to look at their Traffic Management Center, which is a facility, and to help them to identify how the better facilities the engineers would end up building. And they asked us to also provide training on the staff that they had. Facilities was redesigned. The actual staff augmentation was provided. We provided with staff augmentation to make sure that we provided training on a day-to-day basis. So that, those are two that I picked on. Another one is Riyadh, Saudi Arabia. We are actually involved with the program management where they decided they wanted public transport, which is a great thing, but they decided to build it all at once, which, that wasn't what we were expecting. But they're building heavy rail, light rail, BRT, and streetcar all at once. So we work with them, we have bodies there currently, working there to help facilitate the program management. People believe in US experience. That's what we take to our international clients. We have standards that have been developed that they love. We have construction oversight that they love. So that's what we're doing in Riyadh, Saudi Arabia. Then I'll jump into, what is a transportation plan? Uh, just so that we are all understanding what we're talking about. The CTP is a multimodal plan that identifies future transportation system needs that includes highways, public transportation, rail, bicycle, facilities needed to serve the anticipated travel demand in the future. It's a twenty-year plan, it's a roadmap. What do you want to do with your transportation system? Why is a transportation plan important for the city of Stonecrest? The Stonecrest CTP will guide transportation improvement and investments in the city. It will provide a quality assessment of transportation project needs and recommendations based on technical analysis and community input. It will be used as a planning document for the next twenty years. So when you have a list of projects in your plan, every five years you look to develop a C I P, you can go to your plan and pull up the project based on the prioritization that the community had involvement with. So that plan is there to support the initiative on a five-year basis when you begin to look at your C I P. What are the benefits of a C I, of a CTP? The process has many benefits. Uh, I just mentioned it includes a list of projects that have been vetted technically, as well as with this community. Uh, it supports the community adopted vision, involves by integrating land use and transportation planning. It allows communities to consider all modes of transportation. And it is more efficient and technically sound to tie into the A R C and the G D O C planning process. A R C and G D O C need something that's been technically developed, not just a project list, but they need something that's been vetted and technically developed. It also provides an opportunity for the city to obtain federal funding or specific grant opportunity that may come through A R C. If you have a transportation plan and you have identified projects in that plan that matches the requirement of a grant, it's easy to then carry that plan over into that paperwork for the grant because you have a plan. And they know, they know it's been technically sound, it's technically sound, and it's been vetted with the community. Those are two major issues with the federal government. Did the community have input of coming up with these projects that you're going to apply for a grant? So it's very important that the plan is in place, and it's more accountable to the public through the formal public involvement process. Our, our innovative approach, we are innovative, we feel we're best to none when it comes to the services we provide. Uh, been in business for over twenty-three years, I have thirty-one years of experience in this field. Uh, we work internationally, but we have very unique approaches to the projects we take on, and I would do the same here in Stonecrest. It's mission-based, start with the goals and nine. It's community-driven, technically sound, focusing on the goals of Stonecrest. Uh, it's funding-focused, we would, we would look at existing funding and leverage funding, uh, for new projects, new funding. We call it new money. And then we will be integrated, we'll look at what has been done in the past, and then apply that to what is being planned in the future. So the scope that the city requested, the city administration requested us to adjust, in which we did, per the city administration request, we adjusted the scope to fit with the particular price that the city administration wanted us to come to. And I'm not sure if council is aware of those adjustments, but I just want to walk through what the adjustments are. Phase one, project management and data acquisition is the target's goal. Phase two, transportation goals, objectives, and policies, which includes the public stakeholder meetings and the public survey. Phase three is the existing condition assessment. Phase four was admitted because we identified with the city that since the city has developed a comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan, which includes land use, we will just hold the land use component from that plan to apply to the transportation plan. So the scenario that we will use is the existing, and whatever future scenario comes out of the comprehensive plan. Phase five is the future transportation need assessment, it goes through a host of analysis there, uh, within the future need assessment. Uh, phase six, we get into project definition, cost, and potential funding. Uh, that's where we get into project prioritization. We come up with implementation plans, and we basically develop all of the actual spreadsheets and the different, uh, documents that's needed to put projects in an identifiable manner. We identify, uh, potential funding, uh, we identify, uh, potential source of funding as well. Uh, and then we could identify the owner. Some projects in this area will be owned by the federal government because I twenty comes through the city. So you have an opportunity to leverage off of some federal funds because of the connection to I twenty. So we'll go through and document very clearly, uh, the funding that we feel that will be appropriate for the different projects that are, that will be developed. Then phase seven is the documentation, which deals with the draft plan, final plan, a lot of writing, all the graphics, like G I S mapping. Um, the deliverables, uh, that will be a part of the CTP deliverable project management plan, uh, we will deliver every project meeting notes, meeting minutes. There'll be a tech memo for the data acquisition planning, G I S mapping. Uh, we'll do a technical memorandum on the existing transportation system to describe that carefully. Uh, we will document a public involvement plan. We'll also document every public involvement meeting so that we can keep track of what the citizens are saying. We'll also develop a Stonecrest Transportation Survey that will go out to the public. This is the first time to get it right. The best way to get it right is to get input from the public. And I always have a model when I go to these meetings that I listen, listen, and listen for more. Because you always want to make sure that you're hearing the key issues that are actually affecting, uh, the citizens within the city of Stonecrest. That's it, but I say no. Um, then there'll be several other tech manuals that will be developed, the survey results, we'll develop an evaluation framework to evaluate the project. We'll come up with a short and long-term range need assessment. Uh, we'll look at the future transportation planning needs. Then we'll talk about, look at some of the future traffic operation as we get into some of the developments within the city. Uh, we'll develop the goals and objectives, the plan document is the actual, uh, document that will be delivered. Uh, G I S project playbook, this is something that we came up with where we actually identified every project in a G I S map, and we can get the, the list of project, and it will take you directly to the map, and you'll see what the project is. So we developed a playbook to present to our client when we present the plan. Then the final document will be developed after we receive a round of public comments, after we receive comments from staff. So getting to the document that was provided to us by, uh, city attorney, uh, there was a document that was provided to us, and I have a response to each of the bullet items, so if you ha, I think that was provided to the council, right?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. So if you have that, I will actually go page by page and respond to each bullet that have been presented to Ron.
Just one second.
Yes.
Yeah, it's got you through three pages.
All right, at the top of the page it says Rice Consulting, Budget Review, and Travel September twenty-four, twenty-eighteen.
That's it, that's all.
Okay.
The interested groups, they, they also had your, what was sent as far as the proposal, the change.
Okay. Before I go into that document, I would like to share one additional item. Um, and I'm not sure if, well, I'll just say for the record, let me state that during the month of November twenty-seventeen, uh, Rice drafted and submitted a contract via email to the Assistant City Manager for terms and conditions. The contract included Exhibit A, scope of service for pre-spot spots project lift. Exhibit B, scheduled service for that scope. Exhibit C, scope of services for the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Exhibit D was the scheduled fees for that CTP Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Exhibit E, scope of services for spot program management. And Exhibit F, scheduled fees for spot program management. I received an email back from Assistant City Attorney requesting the word document so that the city attorney could redline and edit the contract with all those exhibits.
The contract, the proposed contract?
The contract.
Let's give you one. The, um, when the contract came, was customly done with contracts as a lawyer, because they were going to propose edits to it. So what was requested was the word version of everything that had been presented.
As I was stating, the contract was drafted with all exhibits, all three of the services, with the fees for each of the services, and submitted to the Assistant City Attorney. He asked for the word document. We emailed the word document with the contract and all six of the attachments. And I received the redline back from the city attorney back in November twenty-seventeen. I accepted all of the changes. So I was sitting back waiting on the contract to be executed. This is November of twenty-seventeen. So now getting to the document that you have in front of you with regards to the bullet and items that the city have provided to Rice. Uh, page one, bullet number one, Rice's cost is not exorbitant. And it's consistent with the requested CTP scope of services. Air free project that we work on is uniquely different and catered to our client. We have no cookie cutter scope. Every client changes something in a scope. That's fine, but there's no apples to apples with every client. Rice's CTP scope is unique to Stonecrest. And do not compare apples to apples to Prokate and Dunwoody or Tucker.
Can I interject?
Listen.
As you go, so, so that, that way we can be.
Get closer, right?
Exactly. So when you say that Rice's cost is not exorbitant, right?
Yes.
So from your point of view, that is what you're saying, because, for, part of the reason is because there is no cookie cutter comparisons that you could say that this prices is exorbitant simply because you compared it to Prokate.
Is that correct? The facts here.
No, I'm just saying, is that correct? Okay, so, but also would you say that exorbitant would also would be a point of view from the other side as well? For instance, of, you know, like what you just said, you don't do cookie cutters. So for the city of Stonecrest, in your opinion, can you see where the word exorbitant can be used to describe the cost? Given that there is no cookie cutter, and that for our city, maybe that is exorbitant.
So the definition of exorbitant is unreasonably high.
Absolutely.
And I would say that that's a hundred percent wrong. I will share why. I want you to see what I compiled based upon the facts. Sorry. Because if you're, let me share why.
Sure.
Dunwoody developed its first CTP in twenty-eleven.
Now, and, and also just to be clear, we're, we're still talking about C T P.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, to be clear. And the document did well about separating the two, so I'm following the document.
I, I get, I understand, sir.
No problem. So Dunwoody developed its first CTP in twenty-eleven. Uh, the Dunwoody CTP identifying transportation strategies and projects based on the policy and goal statements. Although this was the first, the city's first transportation plan, the majority, I repeat, the majority of the city's transportation needs were identified in other planning efforts, such as Perimeter CID. They developed a transportation master plan. We were a subconsultant on that plan. We identified all the transportation properties. That's one example. Atlanta Regional Commission, L C I plans, there were several L C I's within the perimeter CID area. They had, they still do, they have a very active CID. And they do a lot of this work, they've gotten federal dollars to do a lot of the transportation improvements. Uh, the L C I plans were developed for several areas within that area, so they give them a lot of, I would say, uh, starting point versus the city of Stonecrest. There's not a lot of CID activities going on, it played a lot of what has happened. Uh, there was a Stonecrest L C I, but that is outdated now. I think A R C is looking to bring that back around. Uh, so there are a lot of initiatives that are actually supporting what Perimeter CID did. G D O C relevant to I twenty-five, revived twenty-five corridor study. Every time an arterial touches twenty-five, they went all the way into the city to make sure that they identified all the transportation improvement on I twenty-five, all the way from seventy-five to Cobb to eighty-five in DeKalb. So every time an arterial touched, so, so Perimeter got a lot of benefits of all the other planning initiatives that were going on. And I mentioned earlier that Rice was a subconsultant at Urban Garage, who developed the transportation plan. He also gave them an urban design plan, we did the transportation.
And I get that, and, and I, and I, I don't want to cut you short, and, you know, and I won't, I will not cut you short, I want you to continue and, and, and be sure to finish your point. I'm not having a problem with your background, with your work, with your scope of services, what you bring to the table, I'm not having at all a problem with that. I, I feel that for what you do, and for what I understand that you do, you're probably well, well qualified. So that is not for me on the table. What is on the table for me is the comparisons of costs. If, for instance, the city of Stonecrest come back and tell you that, look, go back and come up with a plan or a scope of work that will fit into our budget, which is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Whether or not they, which, I saw that, I saw that, I'm, I'm alluding to that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Right, finish.
So with, with that on the table, when, and as far as contract negotiations go, that is part of the gist of negotiating, you know? One side say this is this, I don't, I don't really play well to, you know, in a, in a negotiation where individuals are upset by terminologies and words that are used. And I do understand that, that may be a blow, you know, to your reputation, for instance, or maybe not. But, you know, so if somebody say that this is exorbitant, I, I don't think you should get stuck on that particular issue as opposed to whether or not this is vitally a, uh, an item that we need to, uh, to address otherwise. So if, for instance, you guys cannot meet, you know, if, if our city staff says who you have acknowledged that are also in the business of doing spots and C T Ps and the like, if they say, look, in our world, this is not reasonable, then you negotiate, or you say, well, we think for what we do, it is reasonable. My point is, how do you reconcile the differences between the two? And why would it be an issue for you to adjust your prices just to meet those issues, not just on this one particular item, but throughout this conversation? Because I, I got a, got a feeling that what, what you're going to point out is, you know, line by line and dot by dot, that, you know, here's, here's what the city is, is asking, here's why we want to keep our pricing where it's, where it is.
So what was the document that?
Yeah. I believe that is why we invited him. That was to explain the difference as to why his numbers are what they are and how they compare to, uh, the numbers that have been thrown out in comparison to other cities. And to see if there is genuinely a difference. Or, or are we asking for some things that, um, other cities did not ask for? And if we choose not to get those things, then naturally the number will be adjusted, I would think. But I want to hear about the explanation, because I've never heard the explanation from this body. Right, and, and as I said, I do not want to cut you off, I do not want you to not continue. I just want to interject as we go so I can get an understanding. So at the end of this process, I don't have to ask a million more questions dealing with some of the issues that you may have brought up, that's all. So again, I am not asking you to omit any of that.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And I would share that, um, as Councilman Turner mentioned, we have reduced the scope to match the city's one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But I will share with you the things that I had previously recommended that's not in the scope anymore so that you have a clear understanding of what was removed from the scope to bring it down to the one hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Sure. Sure. In addition to Greis being on the team to develop the Perimeter CID plan that rolled into the transportation plan, we were also on several of the engineering design team to design projects that came out of the place, just for a point of note. And because Perimeter CID was actively engaged in planning, the engineering, the design, and construction, the development of the CTP, and that's why it's going to compare apples to apples. Their CTP was to compile all of the previous planning studies and then identify the gaps and fill those gaps. There weren't many gaps because Perimeter CID was studied on. So when Arcanus was paying $60,000, it was to combine all these planning documents, pull it together, and create that overall project list for all of these different plans. They didn't have to go through modeling, they didn't have to go through a lot of need assessment, they didn't have to go through project identification because it was already done in many other plans. The Dunwoody scope does not compare to the city of Stonecrest CTP scope that Greis published. In summary, the Dunwoody, the Dunwoody CTP consolidated planning efforts previously completed by other planning projects made a great contribution to their overall CTP. It included Perimeter CID, DeKalb CTP, ARC, LCI planning efforts. They all identified major transportation projects that went into the CTP for Dunwoody. Ninety-five percent of the roadway within Dunwoody is in the regional model. ARC has a model, and most of the roadway are significant, either minor arterial or major arterial, they're in the model. Versus Stonecrest, a lot of the roadways are not in the model. So previously, we thought it would be great to develop a model that fits to Stonecrest's needs to be able to identify roadways such as Hayden Quarry, Rock Spring, and Klondike to add to a regional model, run the model, be able to forecast. So we took that out of the scope to bring the price down because if we're trying to compare, you know, to apples to apples, I had to remove the modeling effort to enhance the model and capture Stonecrest local streets. It has the major streets, don't get me wrong, it has Pinola, it has Turnpike. It has a portion of Mall Parkway. Evans Mill is in there. The new, actually, the new roadway that's going to punch through, going through by Newburgh, they already started modeling that because they know it's going to be a major arterial. So it has some of them in there, but it doesn't have all the roadways to specifically speak to the future transportation needs for the next 20 years. We're going to run a model that is a computer generated model. If we're going to run a model and forecast, we need to be able to put in different scenarios to determine what would be the transportation need in 2020, what would be the transportation need in 2030, what would be the transportation need in 2048. If we can't do it, if the roadway is not in the model. So we took that out of the scope to bring the price down. I'm going to move very quickly. Brookhaven developed its first CTP in 2014, and just, I don't think it's a secret. City Attorney was there when I was sworn in as a Planning Commissioner in Brookhaven since they started. I'm still a planning, Brookhaven, still a planning commissioner in Brookhaven. I know a lot of information about Brookhaven, what's going on in Brookhaven as it relates to the planning effort, engineering effort, and city administration. Several previous planning efforts contributed to the Brookhaven CTP. The DeKalb CTP, the LCI, the LCI update, the Obalee District, the Buford Highway Economic Development Plan, the Brookhaven Martyr Station, LCI TOD that my firm worked on. So we developed a lot of projects within Brookhaven and other efforts to roll into the CTP. Although this was the city's first transportation plan, the majority of the city's transportation needs, again, was identified in other efforts. So the Brookhaven CTP did not include, for example, the design charretts that we recommended for the city of Stonecrest. So with the new city, we thought we would put in our proposal to have half date design charrets where you bring in planners and engineers, some 12, 16 staff person in a room where they all day to listen to the community, come in, appoint on what roadway is the problem, where would they like to connect to and buy it, where would they like to connect to them as far as walking or jogging. So we thought that would be a great thing. It's not required for CTP, but I think it's a good thing to have for the first CTP. So we took that out of the scope as well. Keep it moving very quickly. Alternative scenarios. So Brookhaven's CTP did not include alternative scenarios. Let me explain to you what that is. As I mentioned earlier, we're not doing land use analysis. We're going to take the existing map as is. We're going to take the future land use map from the comp plan, and those would be the two scenarios modeled. Let me tell you how Atlanta got around. Traffic grew differently than that future plan. So what Greis was proposing to the city of Stonecrest is we would do a low growth scenario, a medium growth scenario, and a high growth scenario. And we would identify projects with each of those scenarios to be able to meet the demand in the future so you'll have one of three places to go in the future. You can have low growth, medium growth, or high growth. The plan that they will be providing to Greis is a future land use map, one scenario. Some of the scenario may be agriculture. Agriculture doesn't generate 20 cars a day if you have a farm working. But if that flips to a major redevelopment and it goes into high growth, it will not be captured in your CTP. Because we're going to be able to have one scenario of that future land use map. So if agriculture changes to mixed use or residential, we're doing only agriculture if that's what's in the future land use map. So we removed that from the scope also. That's a big piece in modeling each of those scenarios and clinical projects for each of those scenarios. Do you have a question?
No, 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 no.
All right. The Brookhaven CTP did not include a detailed analysis of significant corridors. So they did the CTP, and then after that, they had another RFQ for actually Dunwoody Corridor Study. They had another RFQ for the North Room Hills Road.
Oh, I do have one question. So are you still on the first bullet?
I'm on...
Because, I mean, again, we, I'm willing to concede that, you know, the comparisons, you know, I get that. So, I mean, to detail out, you know, what happened in Brookhaven, what happened in Dunwoody and all that, it's not really relevant to why I believe we're at the stage that we're at. And the reason that we're at the stage we're at, I, you know, disappointingly say to you that it has nothing, nothing at all to do with you, you or your company. It has more to do with the process than we believe, our way. I think it has more to do with the process. The process by which Stonecrest moved forward in SPOS management. And in your, you know, if there's a need for you or council members to hear our presentation, then I'm willing to sit back and listen quietly until you get done. But otherwise, you know, there's some more pointed issues that I'm more, I'm more, I would be more willing to hear your side of the story on. For instance, the recommendations of the staff. You know, as you have this sheet of paper, and if you get to the bottom line, you see what staff recommendations are and how you think that align with what it is that you feel that you're justifiably tasked to do within the city of Stonecrest. And I think that would, you know, be more pointed as to how we move forward from here. Because, for instance, I can ask you right away, are you agreeable to whatever the staff recommends as far as contract negotiations go?
Respectfully, Mr. Funny, until your attorney, I'm going to give you ten more minutes. Thank you. And then we're going to go to staff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we talked about Brookhaven, so we shared why the price difference there, these are just the areas that were excluded. Let's go into program management. The key positions, program manager, principal in charge, contract administrator, specialist, project director, project engineer, public information officer, and admin support. These are just some of the tasks that are in the document that have already been provided to the city. This document, again, haven't changed. It's the same scope that the City Attorney Redline provided, so it's the same one. So I'm not going to go through each one, but nothing changed on this one. I'll tell you what did change. So the scope is there, all of that's there, the scope is there, the same. We did add the community outreach program. We think that's key with a lot of the projects we work on, the small and local business program. The mentor project program is one of the doctor school programs. We could add that in. That's a CEO, CEO initiative that I put in place in every city of country we work in. We go into a school, we adopt a school, help mentor engineer. SPOS key proposal, bullet number two on page one, per city administration request, Greis revised the SPOS program management scope in detail. Scope and deleted tasks associated with public safety. Greis consulted, has developed program management scope that we tailor made to the specific area of Stonecrest. With revised scope, the fee submitted on September 17th is as follows, and it's not what's in that document. So the document you received from this 24th document is not what we submitted where we are with our price. What we submitted is a monthly fee of $38,000.
Do you have that information that we can share?
Yes, you have that, that's the document.
Oh, you said it's not committed, it's not submitted, or is it?
So the city made an error in capturing what we quoted, and I'm giving a correction to what we quoted in our proposal.
Okay, do you have that proposal?
The City Attorney has it, we can follow that to you. We can definitely get that to you.
I think that would probably be a good idea.
Sure. I was thinking that for the city office...
Particularly to the city attorney, if it's misquoted, that's one thing, if it's a, you know...
I think staff can verify that, but a copy of that, of what was submitted is, was circulated to everybody on council.
Okay, and is it, does it allow it to sit out?
In other words, this is, this is what, this was the comment to that document.
So I respectfully disagree. The numbers that we submitted on September 17th of 2018 does not match the numbers that is in the city's review of our submitted. So I provided the updated numbers on what we submitted. It would be $38,000 monthly fee, annual proposal fee is $466,000, total six year fee is 2.799 after the city requested that we remove certain scope items, more specifically parts in REG and public safety. So that was the difference, but I wanted to just point that out. Keep it right on. In addition, while comparing each city that have a SPOS program management, they have a public works department, they have a procurement director, they have a finance manager, they have public works staff, they have public works engineers, engineers that do a lot of SPOS spending. As far as I'm concerned, I don't think the city of Stonecrest have that. The SPOS team would have to provide all of that. The city of Stonecrest don't have standards. Don't have standards. You have to develop all of this from scratch. So when we are comparing other cities, for example, Brookhaven has a company low engineering. They're doing, they have two contracts with the city. So when you're comparing, you've got to add them both together. They have a public works contract, they have a SPOS program management contract. The SPOS is about 5%. When you add in what they're doing for public works, it adds up to about 10 to 12% of all the stuff they're doing. So the city of Stonecrest will not compare apples to apples because there is no public works department or engineering staff here. We would have to do all of that within the SPOS program management team. So our 7% is considering that. Unless the city brings on a full public works department and public engineering department, maybe we can reduce it. But right now, we assume that that's what it is. We had a SPOS planning retreat scheduled in November of 2017, and that was canceled by Mr. Joyner. The intent of why we always stand up SPOS program by having a retreat, begin to learn things that the city have and do not have. From my outside, I assume that the city do not have a public works department, engineering department. So Brookhaven has that contract, Dunwoody have a contract for public works, and Dunwoody also have a contract with SPOS program management. I consider SPOS program management, when you add in the public works contract, it goes up to about 12%. Greis is proposing for the city of Stonecrest, 7% to do all of that. The engineering side, the public work side, and the SPOS side because the staff is not there. We're ready, willing, and able to get started, to get projects going. We feel you have the right choice, it's just that we are at this point where we aren't. The last thing I'll talk about is the scale and the magnitude of SPOS program management. If you compare DeKalb County's comparison, $660 million is their program. The SPOS program manager is quoted as 2.75%. That's $18 million over six years, which gives them a $3 million per year, $252,000 per month. Greis, 7% of the 40 million, which excludes public safety, parts in REG, raise it down to 40 million. 7% comes to 2.799 million over six years, $466,000 per year, $38,000 per month. Just to be able to look at the scale and magnitude, when you have a larger volume of project, the percentage typically goes down because you have the largest, you have 600,000 persons supporting. In summary, Stonecrest don't have public works, they don't have procurement, they don't have finance director, they don't have public work staff, they don't have public work engineer. We would take that on to make the project successful. So in comparison of the other 5%, I feel Greis is a very good choice at 7% to cover all the areas mentioned. And again, if we were to add the others in, it would be at that higher percentage. And we appreciate the mayor sending a letter to CEO Mike Thurman recognizing that Greis have been retained as the SPOS program manager, and we're ready to get to work.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir. You appreciate the mayor, don't want?
We appreciate the mayor sending a letter to CEO Michael Thurman recognizing that the city voted unanimously to select Greis Consulting Group to make... And the letter's there. This letter, sort of full public disclosure. This letter was drafted at the request of Mr. Joyner by the firm, sent to the attorney. We have email documentation of this if you need to email. Sent to the city attorney to basically announce that we would need to get in and work with the DeKalb to start working on the Pinola Road project and any other project that will be working in collaboration with the DeKalb County. So I provided an email that went back and forth between the three of us, with drafting this letter from the mayor to sign it and send it over to...
Right, and Mr. Gray, I'm sorry, Mr. Funny, Mr. Funny, I, you know, respectfully. Personally, I don't care about the letter one way or the other. But in the reason being is that the city of Stonecrest obviously, as city council members, missed out at some point in time in this process. It has been my contention all along that not to exclude Greis Firm from our going forward, but to step by this and get this right. I believe that you would agree with me in your dealing with cities throughout the country and throughout the world that typically the process doesn't go the way that it has done in Stonecrest. And certainly, I believe you would agree with me that you would probably have had no contract or no engagement where after you felt that you had been properly engaged, that the entity then said, well, we having problems. You know, I think you would agree with me that all entities understood fully what it was that they was getting involved with. It is my contention that in the city of Stonecrest, that is not the case. And to say that a entity should continue down a path that we may have, I'm not saying that we have, that we may have engaged in, not fully aware of what was on the table. I mean, I'm, you look, look at what you're looking at now. We have six city council members, including the mayor. Whether or not you have spoken to them is irrelevant, but the fight in the matter is, three are here. Everybody else left. Our council is not the most engaged group of people on the plan, and that is a fight. And it's playing out now. This should never have been the case. We should not have this, this exercise. It's a waste of your time, it's a waste of your energy, it's a waste of your effort as well as the city's. What I have proposed and have always proposed is, again, not to exclude you in this process or your company, but to get this right, to do what other cities, you said that you was only a planning commissioner for the city of Brookhaven, I believe. And I'm certain that in your experience, you all have offered RFQs and RFPs to get jobs done and work done because it's commonly accepted practice. It's the best way. For instance, in Brookhaven, I believe it is, some news article came out that they had entertained 34 different companies for their SPOS management, 34. How many is Stonecrest? As you said, according to what your statements was that, we only looked at two. One which actually worked for is... looked at two, one which actually worked for us already, and then, uh, then you being the second. So when you start comparing prices, you're not comparing prices the same way that you would do in other instances if you were in, in front of another city council, where you would, you would give it, give it an opportunity to project what it is. Number one, how do your company qualify for what, what it is that the city is asking for you to do? What is the scope of work that the city is asking for? It, you know, uh, council should be treated in, you know, I know this is going to go across ban, and, you know, I, I'll, I'll stand and take the heat for it, but this city council are juveniles at this point in, 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 in our development in regard.
Correction, come on.
Um, this is, this is, I get to the, I get to the.
Finish your point, finish it.
Okay. You don't get to do this, we're in.
On the.
Right, we're in public, uh, we're just in a regular, um, court session. We're juveniles when it comes to dealing with SPOS management, and not just us, but there's other cities that are in the same, you know, they're in the same arena. They, you know, they never been given this opportunity before because they never had a SPOS, but we're, we're, we're in a different situation that we have six city council members, including the mayor that has never served in an office before, this is no excuse, but what is, what is proper is what I'm proposing, what I've always proposed, is to push this back out to RFQ or RFP or some combination of the both, to include you in that or anybody else, and let the best man win. But that way, the citizens are at least comfortable that we have done our due diligence in bringing the best people to the table. You certainly, when Brookhaven, a city that you're still with, have entertained thirty-four different companies, I mean, you know, why would it be okay in anybody eyes that the city of Stonecrest only entertained two? And, you know, and, and if you remember, if you recall, and maybe you don't, uh, the first time I ever saw you was in front of city council at the library, and I was impressed with you then, I am impressed with you now, and I think I will probably always remain impressed with you because of the level of work that your company has projected that you do. Based on my personal interaction with you, uh, to full disclosure, you and I had lunch, and we talked about some, some of these issues. And so it is not, um, you know, I'm not trying to throw shade at they, as they would say, but I, I, you know, um, and, and if I am, then I, I apologize for that, you know, uh, you know. But what I am saying is that, I, I don't think it would be your, your experience that you would ever recommend. If you were even on, uh, our SPOS manager, program manager, you would not recommend that we would take services that, um, just based on, you know, you, you call two of your friends up or two companies and say, hey, I like you guys, uh, which one of y'all, we're gonna put just you two in front of council, you wouldn't do that to us, right? You would, you would, you would recommend that we do RFP?
Let me correct you on one.
Please do, please do, because I don't, I don't pretend to know it all, and that's why.
Share with your city of Brookhaven experience.
And your summer at the same time.
Okay. Um, no, I was done, I was just entertaining questions, yeah, I'm done with this. Um, so the city of Brookhaven, during their first year procurement process, where there was no procurement process in place, they retained a company to come in to do public works. That was before the RFQ became a process, so Brookhaven did do that prior to. The public works folks came in and helped them develop RFQ, RFPs, and then they went out for the SPOS program management, but the first people that showed up there was the public works consultant.
That's your best, your, 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 uh, what would you call the best practice? The, the initial way, or the, the ultimate way that you guys did?
Well, the reason why the state allows cities to have purchases early to get the city every Monday is that process. So both ways are acceptable in prep, in this industry. Um, okay, and, and then, um, to speak to, you mentioned problems, you and me, uh, you mentioned something about the city had problems and they want to change direction, something like that.
Not problems, I mean, I, I, you know, if I said problems, I may have said problems, because it, it's been a problematic process, and so.
When you said problematic process, you're talking about procurement, or you're talking about the work that Rice have done? Because see, I.
Procurement.
Okay.
Okay, so again, uh, if I have at any point in this conversation said anything negative in, towards the work that Rice has done, I haven't even approached that yet, so I, I, I would not say that, you know, but in, and only because I don't want to go into that arena, there are some things that I'm, I'm concerned about, uh, that, that took, took place early on, but outside of that, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, it's, I'm okay with what I'm hearing.
So out of all the, I haven't received any emails from the city that have problems, anything, I've received great job, fantastic, all of emails, great job, um, this is wonderful from the mayor, this is great, but I have emails.
You know, Mr. Funny, three times you've mentioned me, and I've heard, and I've held this for the third time, I've called you into my office personally, because I do hand-to-hand combat, I don't go through emails. I called you in my office personally with assistant city manager and the city manager to get clarity even on the recent SPOS work that I was not satisfied with. So all of this raving about the mayor, all of these, this, this, this letter here that doesn't have my signature on it, all of this stuff, just, just, just stick with the facts. You can leave, you can leave me out of this.
From the CAV.
You can, you can leave me out of this, just, just, just pitch up on what you're doing.
Mr. Mayor. I, I'm, I've been trying to get to the floor for a while, and in words of my colleague, Mr. Mama, I would present equal time to my, uh, colleague, Mr. Plan, uh, because we would not, we did not bring Mr. Funny here for involvement in how we make this election. That is something that council and by majority vote has made a decision. And I perceive what you were saying was calling this juvenile initially, but now I understand differently, so I apologize for that. But I think in respect to this council of six, for the majority, we made a decision.
To do what? Clarify that, Mr. Funny.
We, we, we made. We made the decision to go with our first, well, really to continue what we had started from the beginning with the initial, uh, agreement, and that involved Rice Consulting to, uh, do our SPOS management work. And that was basically bringing clarity to it, to say that, yes, let's proceed with it. And we did not have to do the, uh, competitive bidding process, because the, uh, city was not at that level where we had that process in place, and we had bound it according to our legal counsel. And that was incorrectly, we had to deal with our legal counsel on that matter, and we proceeded. But even at that, we asked for a second bid or a second proposal, and we, we heard two proposals, and believed that it was proceeding. Now we're into negotiation, and we were hoping that those negotiations, at least I was, would be in good faith, and they would honestly try to come to some resolution as to something that we can work on in terms of reaching a contract. And to my understanding, Mr. Funny was coming to explain his position on where we stand with those negotiations from his perspective. We've heard city's perspective as where we stand, and it was my hope that we'd be getting a bit closer and not be so combative in trying to still reverse what the council has ruled on, and that's what I hear. And it seems to be counterproductive, and we bring in elements that have little or nothing to do with this, uh, negotiation. So my two cents.
I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, ma'am, this, I, I'll be brief, and, and just, I'll be brief as I can, you know, um.
Now, may I just compliment the fact that you two, two gentlemen stood tall on this and stayed? Thank you.
I appreciate that too, Mr. Mayor, I think that, that's only, uh, that's what our job is, um, not to run from, run from issue, not to take sides, but to hear every, every side out and to be able to communicate and talk back and forth, uh, in a, in an open forum, and, uh, it's because I am honestly, as they would, uh, Mr. Turner would put, in good faith, won't the right end and the right conclusion to this issue? And, you know, if we made mistakes along the way, you know, which I don't say we have necessarily made mistakes, but even if that was the case, then we are not, beholden to continue down a path that is destructive and that is not the path that we should, or not the precedent that we should set going forth. Uh, I do disagree with, uh, Councilor Turner in saying that this was our first RFP, because I'm pretty certain it wasn't our first. Okay, I'm sorry, then, I missed your statement, it was, we did have a process in place to do RFPs and RFQs, it's been on the website since day one, uh, you know, you can go back and look at, uh, where we are able and been able and willing to do RFQs and RFPs. However, we've got to this point, uh, I, you know, that's why I asked the question initially, how did you, of your company get to be on the agenda for today? Who put, who put you on the agenda for?
Helped me to show up.
Right, we put you on the agenda for today because I wanted to know what it is that we, that we should be discussing today.
We were directed to attend.
You were directed to attend.
Directed to attend by Mr. Curry, that's why I'm here, and I, um, showing up.
Right, and I appreciate that, and, and, and the point, the reason why I'm going down this path is because just what Councilor Turner said, you know, if you're here for a reason A, and we're talking about Z, it's wasted time and effort again. So, you know, if we were just to hear a presentation about the, um, the inside of the story as in regards to the, the, uh, the, what we're standing with in negotiation, then I don't think we heard that at all.
Now, now, it's not, just a, a point of clarification, uh, Mr. Curry, uh, told us to show up here and to address two things. The first was the qualifications, which is the most important thing that Mr. Curry was, uh, interested in, and obviously it's important to have someone, uh, who's well-qualified. So there was no, um, problem with addressing that concern, and that's why you saw the slides, it's all, it's all the experience, and I think, uh, Mr. Funny has, has had to that issue addressed. The second issue was on the prices, uh, and that's what he was trying to explain, was, I'll explain it a bit better than I can, but, uh, but those are the two things that we were asked to address specifically, and that's what we came here and to talk about. I did want to mention one thing about, about procurement, which sort of drive me crazy, because I, I do a lot of procurement law, uh, with the state and with the city and with federal government. And, uh, this type of contract actually is very typically not put out, but RFP, because it's professional services and it's extremely hard to define the scope of the work. It's not like you're buying a hundred computers or five desktops or paper plus or anything else, nine services. And as you can tell, the scope you can't just put out there, you know, come, come make a bid on, on SPOS program management. Well, what do you want me to do? And so that makes a very awkward, uh, RFP, RFQ process, so for this kind of work at all levels, whether it's federal, state, uh, or local, whether it's a, whether it's a mature, uh, organization or a new one, um, even a, a very experienced, um, uh, city would do this, uh, by negotiation, not by, not by the.
SPOS.
That, that they can, I mean, I think.
I mean, we're paying that, right? I mean, they entertain thirty-four companies, so, you know, to say that, this is typical. I mean, I see you guys at the back room shaking your head, no, they didn't, I mean.
But that would be a horrible waste of time.
It, it may be, it may be, but I, I, my, my, my only point was that it is obviously done both ways.
It is.
Okay, that's all, that's all.
And as George Turner said, that's y'all's decision.
Right, and I agree.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Funny, appreciate you. City manager, let this up.
Yeah, well, and I don't want to belabor this much longer than it already has gone, but there are a couple things I did want to make sure kind of clarified, you know, I, I heard the conversation been mentioned a few times in regards to RFP, RFQ process. Just for a point of clarification, it was a, it was a presentation that was done by the request of the council, and, and, and council subsequently requested that another firm come on, do another, do a presentation, you know, and I think that's separate aside from a formal RFQ process, so I do want to kind of clarify that. Um, another point in regards to the information that was provided by staff concerning the figures that were being proposed by, um, by Rice, um, the figures we provided in our survey were correct. I think what Mr. Funny was alluding to was that there was a statement that said, that listed in his previous iteration, this is what was listed, that's what he quoted, if you come to the next page, it clearly states, um, what the new proposed numbers reflect. So I did want to clarify that that was accurately depicted in our summary. Um, and I appreciate Mr. Funny going through the issue regarding the qualifications for, um, program management. That's something quite a time we've been asked for, for quite some time, um, so I appreciate getting some information now, we're able to kind of go through and do an assessment in regards to that. Um, uh, so that's what we kind of go back to and relook at. I, again, further appreciate the fact that, you know, we have the negotiation process, and I don't want this forum to become the negotiation process we've been going through. Certainly, I, I feel in good faith, I think we've made, we've made substantial strides, I think, in, in both locations, in both areas. Um, as indicated in the CTP, we see a reduction in price of three hundred thousand. Now, that unto itself, you know, I think what's, what's, what we want to go back and look at, you know, he, he, and then very accurately, and, 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 and much appreciate him going through and depicting what that three hundred thousand, or what those, what those items eliminated were, you know, so certainly want to make sure that we're still getting the requisite amount of our, the scope that we're looking for, you know, based on that number, but, you know, certainly we've made substantial strides as relates to CTP. I think we are, um, I think he's addressed the vast majority of things that we've discussed. Um, and he's right, you know, Dunwoody's scope was much, which was, was, was far less, and it was indicative in the price that they, they, they paid, about sixty thousand, a third of what we're currently at right now, so I think we're certainly far, far closer as relates to CTP. On the program management side, again, a big part of what we're looking for were the qualifications to see where it's been done before. Above and beyond everything else, the staff recommendation has been, has been consistent, and I think that it, it certainly, we still have the opportunity to go through, and I agree with Mr. Brown, uh, I think an RFQ process is much more appropriate in this case as opposed to an RFP, um, where you go through and, and put it out, and allow firms to come back in, provide their qualifications, and have the council make a determination based on, um, their qualifications to be able to perform the work. Um, certainly, and going back to August of twenty seventeen, the original information we received from, um, Rice was specifically in regards to their qualifications related to CTP, and not so much for the, um, or program management. Today, we receive some additional information as it relates to, as it relates to program management, so it certainly gives an opportunity to go back through and review that information. Um, I, I think this is still another part of the process, I mean, we received additional information, um, Mr. Brown provided some information on seventeen, we subsequently gone back and, and provided our notes that we shared with council on the twenty-fourth or, or around that timeframe, and now they've given us additional information today that we need to take into consideration for moving forward. But again, from a staff standpoint, and we've had this conversation, for those who've been charged with going through some negotiations, I think overall, our recommendation is that we move forward with, continue to move forward with, or pursue an RFQ process. With that said, CTP, they certainly have, I think we are very, very close to where we think is, 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 is official, we should be. I think we still have a number of issues we still need to continue to work through and flesh out as relates to the program management, and our recommendation would still be, I, and I think it's good if we were to move forward now with the CTP, I think that would give us additional time to go through that RFQ process or the program management. So again, I think that we have a couple of options for the council to consider.
Um, just my observation. We have a twenty-five page presentation, very well done, go back to what, that I've seen, uh, twenty pages of CTP, which is the smallest portion of the whole thing, and, 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 and very well done, this whole particular piece of it. Five of the twenty-five pages is SPOS, which is, which is the lion's share of money, lion's share of everything that we're supposed to be doing. You would think that would be your verse. So even when we go back to, and, 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 um, respectfully, Councilor Turner, this is where you and I disagree, um, not just you and I, but clearly four people disagree, is that we did not issue a contract or SPOS or an agreement to do SPOS in the office of two thousand seventeen. We did not do that. We did not do that. I, I, I'm, I'm, you, you can even go back and look at a proposal. All of this proposal was CTP, other than the last page. So with regards to us being obligated, because that seems to be the word that, uh, that is not being said up here. We're not obligated to do anything but to take care of the needs of the citizens of Stonecrest. That's where our obligation is. And, um, whether we're mad about it, whether we had some missteps, whatever, uh, let me, let me, let me make something that's very clear. That's, that should be clear to everybody. How do we issue a contract for SPOSS to do the actual SPOSS work in August when SPOSS didn't pass until November? So we did not do that. And all, you know, people are in fear of somebody's gonna get sued here, some. Do your business then. That's what you think it is. Because that's, 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 that's not the case. And we've had on two legal opinions from our city attorney and another law firm that explicitly have told council, there is no obligation to this particular piece of it. If it was, we still wouldn't be trying to negotiate now to get a contract that they don't have. So I'll go back to what Jimmy Klein says, which makes the most sense. As a matter of fact, uh, uh, that, uh, uh, that we've been talking about along with the, 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 the city manager. We've been doing more than negotiating in good faith. We, staff and the city attorney has been in this for more than three months negotiating in good faith. And it, it is flawed from the outset. And Mrs., Mr. Turner, I disagree with you, uh, on, on this end of when you said that most of these things don't go out for RFP or RFQ. If I'm misquoting you, say so. Because the Cal County went out for bid, Dunn Woody went out for bid. And why we're not trying to go out for bid is bananas. So we've had all these conversations. We've had all these talking points. But what we're gonna do from this point is do exactly what we're trying to do, which is get to an end point with regards to also the citizens. That's why I put together a citizens' SPOSS committee and picking individuals from the different districts because they are stakeholders. They get a say. And what I found out recently, there is some serious talent in Stonecrest when it comes to, to, to their experience with transportation plans, legal, uh, uh, program management, all from citizens here that should get a say. So I'll go back to what, something that Council Funny you said, is that they're struggling? No, that would be the fair thing to do. No one's trying to exclude Grace from the process. But the process is to take the Stonecrest first. The process is to make sure that we have best of class first and get this work done. Because even looking at, um, Grace's proposal, you're still at seven percent. When everybody else is at two point five or three or four or five in that area. Because it's what people have done in the past or what cities have done, I don't care. What I care about is getting the best bang for our buck with regards to the city of Stonecrest. Now, if, if, if people are upset about that, you just have to be upset about that now. And our end of it, I'll go back to our, I'll go back to our, our, um, our oath here as a city without fear or favor, without fear or favor. That's what I'm trying, trying to achieve here. And I, I've, I've said it a hundred times. So we're going to engage our citizens. We're gonna make sure that we have the, 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 um, um, best program management for either side to make sure that we can get to where we're going collectively because we only get one shot at this. We only get one shot at this. So council, you have more comments? I'm, I'm, I'm willing to listen.
Uh, one, clarity. You mentioned the SPOSS overstate committee.
Yes.
Would have a say in this process in terms of the selection of, uh.
All, all what I said was that they would have an opinion with regards to what is happening here. Just like you, oh, the, the radio mountain committee have an opinion.
Right.
And then you submit recommendations, correct?
Right, oh, absolutely.
This committee is no different than that. They solicit and then they will be offering their opinion as to what these things should be. As the whole, all the admin, you know, and those committees.
Okay, I, I, I thought I wanted clarity. It's not like you were saying that, uh, they would, uh, get involved in this process we've been trying to resolve with, whether they do an RFP, RFQ, uh, continue the road that we're on.
Well, they'll have an opinion about it.
Yeah, we all have an opinion about it.
Right, exactly. Just like the committees that you sit on today.
Absolutely.
Okay, so where do you choose as a legislator to listen to them? That's gonna be on you. It's gonna be on me.
That's what we are now.
Well, we're, we're, we're not going there now. We're not going there now.
I mean, I have to listen to my constituents now. Yeah, yeah.
So we must be, you must be doing this then because.
Gentlemen.
Gentlemen.
So Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Mr. Turner, um, where, where I'm standing right now is that where did we go from here? We're in the midst of a negotiation. Obviously, it's been talked about it. There is information going, uh, back and forth between the city staff and, uh, Grace Consulting. Uh, at this point, what, what I'm, you know, I'm, you know, there should be a time restriction given the fact that this has been going on as far as I'm, I know for the past three months. And at some point in time, there has to be a decision made and between the two, between the staff and Grace Consulting. And that decision should be brought to council. And I prefer that we see that sooner rather than later. Um, as Mr. Turner said on one other occasion, we've heard a lot of talk about this and, you know, and that, at some point, we just need to go ahead and, and, you know, bring it to a vote and, and move forward with this, you know, with, with staff regulations. And how do you guys deem necessary, uh, you guys, in this case, meaning the city attorney, deem necessary to present this to council and it goes from there? I would say that the citizens of Stonecrest deserve a full understanding and, um, um, full knowledge of what's going on behind the scenes. Because as you all know, that when, when it comes to city government, there is no such thing or should be no such thing as behind the scenes.
And that's what today was to get us one step closer with this presentation.
My view.
Hopefully we did.
My view would be this, um, working with the city manager, um, come to whatever sort of agreement, you know, that the best we can do. Um, and then you have the two factions. And so somehow you just gotta present a contract to council and council can vote it up or down.
Or we can go with the recommendation of the city manager and staff that we should issue an RFQ for this.
And you could do that too. And, you know, that would certainly take, you know, less time to do that. But if we're, you know, uh, if we have been negotiating, I still think that there's, you know, an end point there. But if, if it comes back and they say, we don't, you know, here it is and we don't, we don't, you know, we still want the RFQ, then so be it.
Am I misspeaking? Or am I misspeaking on your behalf, Mr. Turner?
No, I, I think we, I think from a staff level, we've been pretty consistent throughout. And again, I wanna make, maybe the point since it was brought up earlier that, um, the problem that I'm with previously gave a proposal on this, should the council opt to go through that process and go through the RFQ, um, the firm that's currently providing, um, medical services would not be pursuing that. So there's not, I wanna make sure that's made clear, uh, to the council, to the public. You know, we, that the agency is doing would not be pursuing that RFQ.
Well, then why not, if you wanna just go up or down, then go ahead and schedule your, you know, schedule, put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
To issue an RFQ.
Issue an RFQ. I mean, it's, it's been attempted before. I'm not to say that it won't be successful this time. I mean, that's, and I'm sorry.
Uh, would, would it make sense for Bryce to, uh, present a best and final contract? So that if four of the members of the council wanted to go with the contract, it would be done? And if they didn't, then.
I still wanna see an RFQ.
Well, I mean.
I still wanna see an RFQ.
Don't understand your, but if you're outdone, it would be good to go ahead and end cycle on, on this part.
I mean, you know, just come. I think best and final, there, there, there are certain issues.